All right, it is now six thirty.
Evening, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Town Board for Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is the clerk ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mayor Marlin? Ms. Chenoweth? Mr. Williams?
Here.
President.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is minutes from the meeting of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
I'll second, and I'm here, Ms. Clerk.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Are there any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I would note that an updated version of the intergovernmental agreement was emailed to town board members along with the supervisors' report and the two thousand and twenty impacts. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. If you'd like to speak during the town board meeting, please raise your hand. First person to speak, Jennifer Ivory Tatum, Superintendent Tatum.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I am going to be really short. Today is NAPA Day in the district, so National African American Parent Involvement Day, so I'm hopping between Zooms here. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity to join in tonight and just say a couple of words about the intergovernmental agreement that you guys are going to be talking about tonight. Danielle is going to go through all the details. She came to our board meeting last week. We're really grateful to have her and her team come out to be able to share that information with us. We're super excited about this partnership with the township. So I wanted to publicly, kind of publicly, be a Zoom, thank Danielle and her team. I wanted to thank Danielle for her leadership and for her team and their diligence and to support Urbana families. We're very excited about the ability to be able to support some of our homeless families that are struggling with secure housing right now, and this agreement and this partnership will benefit not just the city of Urbana, but our families, our students, and our community as a whole. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know you guys haven't signed it yet. I'm kind of forecasting that hopefully you will. Our board was very excited about the opportunity, and we'll be bringing it back on February sixteenth with just those couple of changes that you're going to see tonight. So thank you very much, and I appreciate having a few minutes to come and talk tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ivory Tatum.
Thank you.
Next person to speak, I see Alan Max Axelrod.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to start off with a very unique phrase. I'm sure a lot of people would appreciate it here. Regardless of what else I say, I would like for you to just go ahead and pass this thing amended or no, because there are some very concerning things to bring up, and it fundamentally goes into the difference between progressive policy and progressive practice. So you can have one and not the other. It's a very, very simple idea, once you break it down. And the reason that I bring this up is because there's been some misinformation shared by public officials present, plural, and that misinformation has a single source, and that single source is actually lying to them out of desperation for hiding their own professional misconduct. So it's very, very interesting that upon accusations of people being low-information QAnon conspiracy theorists, the irony is twofold. One is that the allegations that exist for that conspiracy theory, as it purports, do not actually exist. That's a really confounding thing. So the persons breathing life into it are in this body, including the supervisor. The second thing is more about this low-information aspect. I very much encourage rigorous analysis, rigorous policy, because our human rights depend on it. And adopting, perhaps out of desperation, unconfirmed and in fact factually inaccurate information, trying desperately to behind sometimes privacy barriers on social media, purport that there are people teaming up with right-wingers to talk about trafficking in contexts that just aren't true. See, the reality is that there are two investigations going on. One is an internal organization's process regarding professional misconduct, and the other is earned near coverage of the Champaign County Democrats, featuring also the township supervisor Danielle Chenoweth for professional misconduct. Now, a bit of history on this. About two weeks ago, I had sent an email to the Champaign County Democratic Party, and I outlined instances of professional misconduct from several officials, including Kyle Patterson, including Stephanie Furtado, including Jordan Humphrey, including Emily Rodriguez, and including township supervisor Danielle Chenoweth. That information was shared outside of the executive body, so I do not have any restraint in sharing that information, as I did with the journalists. And the other thing is that no matter how many whys you put in independent media to try and disparage an outlet you don't know whose process involves interviews with not one, not two, not three, not four people, but more, with testimonials being collected based off of people's lived experience, we just have to ask, why? Because there is a seminar that I was very, very appreciative of, and I actually learned about it in the township when I worked there. It was a domestic view seminar by the Courage Connection on January eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. It's amazing who didn't learn from that. Have a good night.
Does anyone else wish to address the Cunningham Town Board? Uh, Haki?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Drake Matira Haki, resident of Champaign, a recent graduate of the University of Illinois Community Health. I am not here to discuss anything but serious issues that must be addressed. I understand that the powers that be love numbers and evidence, although there is evidence of racism and structural violence, I will give you numbers. Someone, a great person, a comrade, did a capstone project on homelessness in Champaign, and although homelessness is decreasing in Champaign, the demographic of the demographic of the homeless population is ever-changing. Only fourteen percent of the population in all of Champaign County is black. Only black people, black people only make up fourteen percent. But in regards to homelessness, black people make up fifty-four percent of that share. In regards to racial disparities regarding family, seventy percent of families nationally with children are black. The homeless families with children are black, slightly above the average. Oh, that is actually here regarding Champaign County's homeless black population for families. If we're talking about my fault, I'm still trying to, I'm reading the graphs and the numbers now. The number of homeless men has declined by twenty-six percent, while the other, while the number of women increased by forty-five percent, meaning that there is a structural violence regarding race and gender as the increase in domestic violence survivors or victims as it relates to homelessness in Champaign. Since two thousand and five, there has been a two hundred and sixty-three percent increase in homelessness there. So there is a direct need to actively create institutions and structures that are targeted to LGBTQ plus individuals, black women, domestic survivors. It is not enough to simply say we have resources that benefit everyone. One tie, no tie, not one tie lifts our boat. Some people have cruise liners and other people have dinghies, and we have to get rid of that, that thinking, the idea of equal opportunity, that that exists, and the idea that if we've been, if we just put the resources out there for everyone, that it will benefit everyone equally. There are only three things that I, three things that come to mind in regards to institutions, structures that are supposed to, are supposed to give assistance to homeless individuals. One of those is what does the communication look like in regards to sending out the information to marginalized communities? Two, is it an easily, is it, are the resources easily accessible? We understand that many pantries, that many people go hungry because pantries ask for so much food, and reality, I mean, ask for so much information for individuals to get food, but we understand that there is a mistrust against the system, a mistrust, a mistrust that is not exaggerated. So my third, so my third thing is what are the institutions doing to create a sense of confidence in itself? How can they build confidence amongst the people to actively go to the organizations out of here? If the organizations out of here say that they do the work, then I would love to see individuals who are most vulnerable have the confidence to go and achieve and get the resources needed. I leave, I leave with that and say, I believe everyone here and everyone that is organized, that's been organizing, and those who have been organizing before I even came to Champaign, that we all understand what needs to be done and the work that needs to be done and the issue that we must face. And I hope that the numbers that I've said tonight can shine a light on terms of some of the recommendations needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the town board? Rita Connerly?
Good evening. My name's Rita Connerly. I'm a resident of Champaign. I am here to address the town board regarding some concerns, and I just kind of wanted to echo what Drake has stated, and some of the things that he has stated, as well as Alan. Additionally, I wanted to also commend the work of the township office in partnership with the Unit one sixteen to attempt to provide housing for those families. I think this is one step in the right direction to eradicating homelessness here within the Champaign-Urbana communities. Additionally, I just wanted to speak to unethical behaviors and misconduct. I think that we are in this community together, and if we are considered progressives, I think that we collectively should be aiming towards some of the same goals. To have conduct from professionals in a way which is, which appears to be egotistical, there seems to be an arrogance surrounding the support that we're providing to the clients in our community, and I just don't think that we should be looking at the most vulnerable people as subject matters. And I know that data is important. However, people policies and taking the approach of supporting individuals who are in most need is definitely not a political matter. It's unfortunate that it takes political seats in order to effectively change some of the systems and some of the experience of many of our most marginalized communities. However, as individuals who are serving in positions of quote-unquote "power," I think that it's very important that we humble ourselves in those positions. This, again, it's a collaborative approach. Oftentimes, it's necessary to be in contact and have communication or relationships with people with whom you're not, you're not either comfortable with or personally have a despise for. Again, I don't think that politics is a social club. We are not here to, for self-satisfaction and/or self-gain. It is my whole intentions that each of our county board members, or I'm sorry, our township members, and those who are serving in the seats that can effectively generate both revenue and change for our community, that we are doing so in a manner that is, again, people first. I am a little also disappointed at the fact that our assessor has the people's assessor. I don't think that that is his title professionally. He is the township's assessor, and I think that it would just be a little, I mean, just for the sakes of making sure that we are politically correct. I think that that would be beneficial for him to update his title, especially for those who do not attend these meetings often. But I just wanted to finally kind of notate that, you know, we know that township only does one, you know, they have a lot of jobs that they can do. You're not aware of issues. If you don't know about them, sometimes we have to vocalize those through social media. There seems to be quite a tension using social media platforms with both citizens as well as professionals, and I think that when we are interacting, that we must maintain that professionalism, regardless if you are speaking in or acting on behalf of your position or individually, independently. I think, again, it's important, those titles that you wear, you're wearing, you take them with you. I think I've learned that, but it's important that we are listening to the people, that our approach is our people first, and that we take the hauntness out of it and making sure that we are humble while also serving. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the town board? Okay, I don't see any more hands raised. We'll move on to committee to verify bills.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so. So in the town fund this last month, we had ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents. In the general assistance fund, we had eighty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Our total is one eighty-one, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and six cents. I'll just note, our general assistance is up to one hundred and twenty-seven current participants. That's up from one twenty-five last month. Just to give a frame of reference, city of Champaign Township covers around thirty participants. They have a more constrained program. Forty, fifty-four of our participants are homeless. That's up two from last month, about forty-two percent. We have eighty males, forty-seven females, and zero transgender and gender non-conforming individuals, and the community work program, we're making closed in January two thousand and twenty-one. I will note that with rental assistance, as I had announced at the last meeting, I adjusted the rules because during COVID, the number of people behind on rent has increased, and the rental arrears have increased dramatically. So with help from state funds, we've been able to increase the assistance up to three months of assistance for COVID-impacted households. We also support households that are not COVID-impacted. A lot of the households we serve are people on SSI, which provides only seven hundred and ninety-three dollars per month, and there's no place in town that you can live independently on that and not be rent burdened. So we have increased our rental assistance cases this last month. We had ten. I have another fifteen on deck, just waiting for my approval today. So I expect that to actually be significantly higher next month. In terms of emergency housing, you will see in the bills, and we'll talk about the emergency housing for Urbana families in a second, when we get to that agenda item. But CU at Home, we have been providing immediate emergency hotel stays for homeless residents staying in Champaign-Urbana, excuse me, at CU at Home or Austin's place to rest and quarantine while they felt ill or had symptoms and were waiting COVID results. So if positive, public health has been paying for their quarantine, just like they would pay any resident in town that did not have an adequate place to quarantine. So you will see in the town bills at three thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. That's basically for quarter, what would be quarter two, yes, quarter two expenses reimbursement to CU at Home. I have hotel receipts and proof of payment. So CU at Home fronted that money, then provided the receipts, proof of payment, and we have paid them back. Luckily, we have really seen very little transmission in the shelters, and I think it's in part due to this privately funded through our angel donor fund program that provides those hotel stays. And let's see, the other piece, I just wanted to, I shared this, and you'll see it all so on social media, or I want to give props to our intern, Shubika, who graphically designed the two thousand and twenty impacts. So I just want to point out that when I came in four years ago, we had twenty-six participants. Thank you, Jason. So we had twenty-six clients on general assistance, and it was our only program. And I really want to thank my team and the internship program, the School of Social Work, our volunteers. We've had over seventy-five thousand dollars in angel donors in a single year, and it really is the entire community that really helped to pull together and make this happen, including the town board. You approve our budget each year. So in general assistance, we have, in two thousand and twenty, we supported three hundred and fifty-four households, about a half a million dollars. In rental assistance, we supported about forty-five thousand dollars of seventy-five households, and that includes seventy-one children. That's both for homeless move-ins as well as folks who are behind on rent. We added emergency housing, and that includes both the program with CU at Home and our pilot emergency housing for ran-up families that we piloted under COVID and hoped to make permanent, permanent as long as we need it. Actually, we'd like to eradicate homelessness and close the township if we could. But emergency housing, we've spent seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars to house twenty-five adults and eleven children. Of course, that was only a partial year. And then subsidized housing, we have started, as you know, housing advocacy. We have signed up sixty, excuse me, seventy-six households for subsidized housing. There are extensive wait lists. We've been able to move fourteen people into housing. We recently launched a program called Township Housewarming. We actually provide up to several hundred dollars in furnishings for a homeless household to move into housing so they can get plates and cups and furniture, mattresses. We have a bed program. We work with RPC, so the beds are taken care of separately. But that piece really helps for people to move in and have some things to start their housing, their house lives with. We have been up the fourteen. These are folks that include a number of folks who have been chronically homeless, which means that they've basically been homeless on and off for over a year. Disability support, we, we had thirty-two people. We have helped to apply or appeal their disability payments. In two thousand and twenty-eleven, we're awarded SSI payments, and as you know, with our partnership with Channing Murray Foundation and Solah Grasha, we have been providing food support under, during COVID. We, it has been so successful, we intend to continue it, and I agree with some of the members of the public who talk about accessibility. Oftentimes, people can't get to a food pantry. They don't have transportation, or they are ill, or they are immunocompromised, or they have concerns about getting to the pantry. And the pantries do sometimes request information, and you can only go a certain amount of times in a month. Our bucket brigade has delivered nine hundred and twelve food buckets. That's two weeks of food pantry provisions. St. Vincent de Paul provides the food pantry provisions for free. We thank them very much. That has served sixteen hundred and seventy adults, a thousand and forty, thirty-four children, and we delivered forty-eight holiday dinners. And we also, through our solidarity gardens initiative, which is a broad collaboration spearheaded by township, it's certainly much broader in terms of the Park District, in particular, the library, and other partners at the table, produce over three thousand pounds of fresh produce that we delivered to community members. We did not request any information other than where do you live, and we support people regardless of documented status. We have Spanish speakers, French speakers. We have sign language interpreters, and we've been able to communicate and get that food to folks. That has only cost us thirty-three thousand, thirty-six dollars. So in terms of like, you know, bang for your buck, the emergency housing and the food support have been huge with very small investments. And I just, I kind of want to point that out to the town board as we go forward. We have grants to seventeen organizations. Those grants are about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And in this last year, we have launched utility support. Thank you to the Unitarian Church, which has raised over eight thousand dollars in private donations. We've been able to turn people's water back on same day. All we require is their water bill, and we'll do it for anyone in the county. Power, we are paying off if they have met their limit with LIHEEP or they have any other barriers, such as not having physical social security cards. We will then help to pay off their utilities. We have helped forty people sign up and receive free phones through the Lifeline program. That's not paid for through township, but our case managers provide that assistance. And then we helped eighty individuals with stimulus payment help, and we've had over five, six thousand, excuse me, six hundred coats distributed. That's more than we've ever had. This is our fourth year of doing warm winter gear, and so definitely the demand, but also the supply has been up. I just want to thank Urbana voters, the sixty-three percent, and everyone who is in Urbana for approving more funding. And we wanted to compile these statistics for you to let you know how our impact has grown over the last four years. I'm happy to take any questions, and then we can pass it two-way, and if he has an update.
Questions for Danielle. Mary Alice?
Can I ask questions about the bills for a moment, Danielle?
Absolutely, sure.
So I noticed, did Thomas Delgato leave?
Yes, he has taken a full-time position working with native communities on food justice issues. We're very proud of him.
All right, well, that's a very sad loss for the, for the township, but good for him. And I noticed, I noticed that there was a News Gazette. Are you filling that position or is that for another position?
Oh, no, I haven't filled the position yet. I think the News Gazette, its leftovers from the tax levy notifications in December that were paid in January.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Danielle?
Not a question, but I feel like since it's tax time, tax time, I need to remind people to apply for the earned income credit if you qualify. Every year, about thirty million dollars, more than thirty million dollars comes into Champaign County from the earned income credit, and one out of five people don't claim it. And it's not necessarily for low, real low-income people. It actually maxes out. If you're making thirty, forty thousand dollars, you're a single parent, you can get six thousand dollars or more back in the earned income credit. So be sure to remind people to do that, and with minimum wage going up, it makes it a little bit easier to make more, so you get more back. Also, this year, there's a special provision that, since a lot of people were laid off mid-year, they may not be able to max out the earned income credit, so they can actually use two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen income to apply for that credit. So there's a lot of options there, and we want to make sure we maximize that. And thanks for the work on making sure people getting their stimulus too, and that will be coming up again, too.
Yes, and just so you know, we continue to do the stimulus check connection work, and we always notify our participants of the earned income tax credit. Many of them don't qualify from the general assistance side, but they do with rental assistance, and we, so we send that out.
And in some cases, they stay with, they're staying with people who do qualify for extra because they have somebody that's staying with them. So there's a lot of different things to consider. If, you know, if If, you know, if we don't have, there aren't a lot of volunteer preparers, so, you know, it may be worth it for some people to actually go and have their, have their, pay for it and make sure that their condition is, they get some professional help to make sure they max it out.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Danielle? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So move.
I'll make a motion. I'll second then.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports of officers?
I think I gave him a report. Go ahead.
The Cunningham Township Assessor's Office has completed, pretty much completed the move to Lincoln Square. We're still doing some unpacking. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, the office is so close to the public. However, I do make myself available for appointments. I'm always available over the phone, over Zoom. I've even made house calls to help seniors fill out their senior exemption forms if needed. So if there are any assessment issues or questions, feel free to call the office, 217-367-7059. Unfortunately, with the move, we did lose a bit of productivity, but we're starting to pick that back up now that everything is settled. I think that we're actually going to realize some savings due to us going to, moving our CAMA system to a serverless environment and moving it to the cloud. So the server upgrade that we budgeted for, we won't be utilizing all of that money, and so we'll have some savings there. Lastly, I would like to remind people that as the elected assessor, people, actual real-life people voted for me, and I am the assessor. And as the assessor, I do the basic job of assessor, which is to do my best to assess property. But on top of that, I view this, this position as a privilege, the privilege of service, and I take that privilege very seriously. Everyone here takes that service seriously. Though we may not all agree on every single thing, I know that everyone here takes that service, that privilege of service, seriously. The only person here for their own self-gain is Fred Grosser. He charges by the hour, and that's okay, that's his job. One of the things I did that goes above and beyond my role of assessor is applied for a grant from the state of Illinois for over $200,000. Now, yes, I needed some of that money for myself to do things that I thought would protect my staff in the midst of a pandemic. It was only a quarter of that money that I needed. The rest, I applied for Danielle. Did I know what she was going to use it for? No. I honestly don't really know what Danielle does on a daily basis. What I do know is that her and her staff work their asses off to help people in need. And I knew that that money would be used to help people in need, and that's all I needed to know. I couldn't even reach her to ask her how much she needed from the grant because she was busy helping people in need. I have seen her staff take calls after hours, deliver food baskets. They have even, without my knowledge, deputized some of my staff to deliver food, clothes, volunteer at coat drives. And Danielle does not seek attention for these efforts. I myself very sparingly use social media, and that's okay. I don't seek that type of spotlight. And I hope to be elected, and it looks like I will be again, by the people, by actual real-life people who can vote, to be the assessor for the next four years. That's my report.
Thank you, Wayne. Any questions for Wayne? Any additional report from supervisor?
No, that's all. We always appreciate it, volunteers, including those from the assessor's office that we were open to deliver food.
Next item is new business.
So first, we have a resolution key dash 2021 dash 02001 are authorizing the supervisor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the School District of Education of the Urbana School District number 116 for the purposes of providing emergency housing services to homeless families with the Urbana School District boundaries. And do you want to put a motion on the table, and then I can provide an update?
Sure. Their motion.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Dennis.
Resolution as opposeded.
Okay. I didn't hear the second.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion.
Briefly, a quick update on this. So, and I put this in the supervisor's memo, and we will get it up on the website. So essentially, we have had, under COVID, a emergency housing for Urbana families out of the necessity of not having same-day shelter for families in our community. And I, as you know, because I've been, you know, beating my shoe up the table for three years over this, we've been seeking other organizations. We could resource to do this work. We've attempted to expand the current shelter for the county, which is only eight units for the entire county. They do an excellent job. It's just that they don't have enough space for people in the community. And so COVID hit, and it was, there was no more room for us to look for other options. So we opened this program, which I announced to you at the time, and we've been to house families. We have been, I have a case manager who runs this, as well as our Bridge to Home Program, which is rapid rehousing for literally homeless individuals and families. And we really, I think, have stepped into that case management role that was missing with Regional Office of Education, and that was, that's their explanation of some of the concerns they had when they closed their program in May of 2019. That program only provided three to eight days of housing. We essentially provided the housing that's needed, and our average stay is 39 days. So that is very reasonable. We have a very good relationship with a local hotel that charges us monthly, and we've been able to provide supportive services, diapers, food, technology, phones, connection to social services, and maternal health and well-being. So pretty intensive case management on that, and it has been very successful. We haven't had any family return to literal homelessness. So on your, on the agenda tonight is this resolution, and you may ask, well, if you're already doing it, why would we need this resolution? What we would like is, so essentially, the model that we're using is two to four rooms of temporary emergency housing reserved for families who are literally homeless. And those families must have children enrolled in Urbana schools or staying overnight at Crisis Nursery. So essentially, because we are taxpayer-funded in Urbana, we need to preserve that, that piece, which is that the children are in Urbana schools. We certainly have messaged, could share this program with Champaign. We're happy to look at options of getting state funding to serve the county. So if we are funded to serve the county, we could consider that. But right now, we are funded to serve Urbana. A family is referred through the partner agency, and we're requesting written memorandum of understanding from those agencies. We have a, the Crisis Nursery has, we have an MOU. The school district wanted an intergovernmental agreement. That was their choice, and we were happy to assist. We have actually already met with their school counselors and principals. We provided orientation to the program. They're currently referring folks, but this really kind of cements that relationship. It makes it clear, you know, between leadership and various things. It kind of stabilizes what that relationship looks like. What was very important to us is that every staff member in Urbana know that they can refer and how to refer. So before, we were hearing from staff members, you know, I'd be a counselor in the middle school who, a child said, you know, disclosed they don't have any place to stay, or they're staying in an unsafe place. So we were working with individuals, and I felt like it was very important to broaden that and make it clear that it's for the, you know, any staff member. So we conducted that orientation, and we'll continue to do that. And we've had very good success with both of those partnerships. And then I would just want to note that this program is not appropriate for families fleeing or at risk of domestic violence, because, and they should be referred to Courage Connections Domestic Violence Hotline. So part of that screening and referral is just to make sure that, since we do not have the security of a domestic violence shelter, that people are being referred appropriately. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or any concerns you have about the resolution before you. I just want to note, it's the newer resolution. I just got it today from the school district. They made a few tweaks, and I noted in the email to you exactly what numbers were changed.
Questions. Mary Alice.
It looks like one of the things that was updated was number nine, which gives it an end date of June 30th, 2024. Right? So basically, three years. Was that to coincide with the fiscal year?
I think it's yet to coincide with fiscal year, but also because they wanted, the board wanted to just look at it each, they wanted to be involved, and they found that the best mechanism for that kind of regular engagement and involvement was it to per tabbet sunset. And I have no concerns with that. I mean, this agreement is, there's no exchange of goods, or there's, there's really no exchange of goods or services, so to speak. We're not offering the school district any services. We're basically serving our constituents, but we have an understanding of what that referral process will look like.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Looks like we're ready to vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item is Resolution T 21-02-002R, authorizing supervisor to sign an agreement, NJS Enterprises for Case Management Software. Could we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Danielle, discussion?
So simply, this is another seat of case management software. As we continue to grow programs, we max out and are not able to actually get into our case management system. It's $2,500 licensing agreement. We've become heavily reliant upon this piece of software as we're, I think, I may have noticed, mentioned this to you before, but we, when we were, over the holidays, we received 200 applications in two weeks. That's a record. And there's a lot of inputting of information and case management that's needed with that. So just asking you to approve additional seats so that we can not, we can all be in the software at the same time.
So the council's already approved the agreement itself, correct?
Correct. You've approved the agreement. You're basically just allowing us to purchase an additional piece of software.
Okay. Bill, you had a question?
I just, I can't remember if this, is this an annual fee, or is this a one-time?
It's a one-time fee with annual maintenance fee that is a portion, it's 20%.
Okay.
Per seat.
Do you happen to know how many seats we have now?
We have six. This would be seven.
Okay, thanks.
And I have about 12 full-time equivalents, so that gives you a sense, but some of them don't use that software. They'll use other software that we have, or they're using accounting software primarily.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And seeing we have no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned. And this will be followed by a meeting of the Urbana City Council.
Have a good week. Thank you.
And we'll begin when the clerk gives us the sign. Phyllis, are we ready to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council, Monday, February 8th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the meeting of January 25th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Your motion to approve the minutes?
Moved by Jared, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Bill Colebrook. Any corrections? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is presentations and public input. We'll begin with a presentation by Andrea Rudy. And is Lily here as well?
Yes, I believe Lily's going to join us. She'll be available for questions.
City planner, and a planner, Lily Wilcock, and it'll be an update and an overview of the comprehensive plan and the process.
Great. Well, thank you for this opportunity to just update you on the comprehensive plan process. Hopefully, most of you are aware that we launched our first community engagement tool, which is our ImagineUrbana.com website. And Jason's going to, he's got the website up right now. This is the homepage. And if, I hope that some of you saw the article that Smile politely wrote about the comprehensive plan, and it's already resulted in several people coming on the website and saying that they heard it on social media. So on the website, you can see Urbana Places, the Ideal Wall, and the Quick Survey. These are places where people can post their ideas, their feedback, they can post photos, et cetera. And hopefully, all of you can have an opportunity to go on. We encourage you to register as well, and you can see the comments that everybody's made already. So what I'd like to share with you, in case you haven't seen the website, is that on the About page, we have a video that features Lamont Peppers, our Community Engagement Coordinator, and he tells the community what a plan is and why it's important for people to get involved in the comprehensive plan. So Jason's going to show that video now.
I am Lamont Peppers, Community Engagement Coordinator with the City of Urbana, and I would like to talk to you about the exciting update, our community, the city's comprehensive plan. Traditionally, it is important that the plan contains a general vision and goals to guide policy, development, and resources for the city. Urbana is doing things a bit differently in that we are incorporating many aspects of Urbana life in our comprehensive plan. Urbana is doing things a bit differently in that we are incorporating many aspects of Urbana life in our comprehensive plan. We strive to make public input accessible to every person of Urbana. We are trying new things, creating new partnerships, and we will take this input and create the comprehensive plan for the future of Urbana. There will be various stages of community input in order to ensure our plan addresses the opportunities, concerns, goals and visions that all residents of Urbana have for our city. This community engagement portal lives at ImagineUrbana.com, where you can register for updates, participate in surveys and get information about the plan and process. By no means are we ignoring, passing by or trying to get around the fact that we face some difficult challenges. When it comes to strategizing, we know that there are many things that must be given consideration and have to be adhered to. But that's why this plan is about you, Urbana. This plan will impact people who work, live, shop, study and play in Urbana. And it considers the surrounding communities. Therefore, the plan must come from extensive community input so that it can guide the city to prepare for the future, develop in a way that reflects the vision and build a vibrant community that includes sustainability, equity, quality of life and health. We look forward to your participation as we together imagine how Urbana can thrive and prosper over the next twenty years.
Well, we really think that Lamont captured uh, the essence of what the Imagine Urbana Comprehensive Plan is and encouraging community engagement. Um, we also have another video that's on the website and it builds on what Lamont's talking about with, that it impacts everybody. Anybody that lives, works, plays, does business and studies in Urbana. And so we have a video that's called How Does The Comprehensive Plan Impact You? Uh, we also, I just want to point out that the student in the video uh, is a high school student at Urbana High School and her name's Devagana Rana. And she is our intern that's joined our team for the, for Imagine Urbana. Uh, just uh, gotta give you a little bit of background on her because she's such an amazing young woman. She's devoted uh, to working with underrepresented student groups. She's on the FEMA's Youth Preparedness Council. Uh, she's an education resource specialist with Yes She Can Campaign. And this past year, she won a national call for kindness contest and was awarded a thousand dollar grant. And she's using that to get new international students accustomed to American culture. So just delighted to have this remarkable woman as part of our team. And so we'll see this video again, it features uh, real local people that live, work, play and do business in Urbana.
Why is the comprehensive plan important to me?
My name is Devagana Rana and I'm a senior at Urbana High School. The Urbana Comprehensive Plan is important to me as it articulates the vision for my city for over the next two decades.
Community and connecting are important to me. And so being part of the planning process will help to give me a voice when it comes to attempting to make sure that when I choose to bike or walk somewhere that I can do so enjoyably and safely.
I came here in nineteen sixty-two, lived uh, on Tremont Street and I'm currently living on Eureka in Urbana. We need grocery stores. We need um, a Citibank or either a branch bank and we need a health facility. And we also need a community center for the people in this area.
My name is Terry Beals. I'm from Crispin, Illinois, farm country. The Urbana Comprehensive Plan is very important to me because I do enjoy coming to this town and I want it to continue to thrive and prosper. The outdoor venues, the music, the art, the restaurants. They just, it's a whole heart kind of a town and we need to keep it going.
My name's Marley Corado. I am the manager at El Progreso in Urbana. This comprehensive plan is important to everyone and especially the businesses in minority um, communities.
I'm Somali Tomzak. And as a University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign parent, it's important for me to ensure the safety and the quality of life experience for my daughter.
I've been a resident of Urbana for thirty-five years. Urbana's um, comprehensive plan is important to me because it helps make streets, sidewalks, community buildings and businesses accessible to me.
Feedback from artists like me is essential to ensuring that the comprehensive plan addresses and allows the artistic lives of artists like me to grow.
Well, we, we can't say enough about the members of our community that were willing to to take time out of their day and tape this. And thank you Jason Leggett for your outstanding job on both videos. He's behind the scenes, everybody knows him, but he does such great work and um, we just really like the outcome of this video. We're going to be adding some different or additional segments uh, as we, as we get them. We've got a couple that we're still taping this next week. Um, we're going to add someone that works from out of town or lives out of town and works uh, here in Urbana so that you can see what their perspective is. But um, this is, as I said, this is just the first tool, the, the website. Uh, we'll be rolling out additional tools, including SMS texting. Uh, we also have uh, we'll have posters in various businesses, we're doing flyers. We have a student group, I mentioned, an Urbana Planning Group, a graduate class at the University of Illinois that is um, going to be reaching out to underrepresented communities uh, here in Urbana. And they've selected four different groups and they'll be developing plans and really want to do some more personal outreach. So it's not all these uh, digital tools that we're talking about because we really, even during COVID, we still want to try to reach out individually and in a personal manner as much as we can. Uh, we'll also be doing a postcard mailing to all the residents in Urbana that will give them the SMS texting number as well as the website to encourage people uh, to go on and give us feedback. And so these are just some of the things that are underway. Lily Wilcock, uh, we missed her getting introduced at the very beginning. Um, but she is here and she's done a tremendous job on the website and getting that developed and working with our vendor. And so um, she's here to answer any questions as well as I am, if you've got any. And uh, we're looking for that feedback that we're able to share with you. Hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have some preliminary data that we can share.
Any questions for Andrea or Lily? Uh, Mary Alice?
I'm uh, thank you very much Andrea and Lily for all your hard work. I'm really excited about this process. Um, I'm wondering if you have reached out to the library at all about um, advertising this and and kind of putting out cards where the, the computers are, because I know that they've reopened to allow people to provide input.
Yeah, we actually have a meeting scheduled with Celeste this next week. Um, I sent out uh, the press release that all of you received on Fri- or Thursday evening. I also sent it out to a broad list of organizations and um, uh, individuals in the community. Uh, got several responses from that. And so we're setting up meetings with these various groups so that we can um, understand how we can outreach to um, their, their, their um, base of customers or, or base of stakeholders. Celeste is one of those, we've had initial conversations with her, she was aware of our plan, but we're meeting with her next week to talk more specifically about how we can outreach to the different groups that, that use the library.
Great. Yeah. And just to quickly add too, we'll hope to, to be able to collaborate with their team lab and their connection with Urbana Neighborhood Connections and the collaboration that they've been able to do in the COVID, um, and, and try to um, try to tap into that and see how we can, can partner with this.
Some of the, some of the other groups, we've already met, we've met with several groups already. One of, uh, we met with Danielle, she gave us some great feedback on how we can do uh, continued outreach. She's also said that we can take part in some of their events, like the Bucket Brigade, that we could be there. Uh, maybe talk with people on the side where they feel more comfortable. And they feel more comfortable being at a uh, either a venue or part or with affiliated with an organization that they trust and that they feel good about. And so they're very gracious to allow us to be able to participate in some of those events so that we can uh, spread the word and, and hopefully people will get engaged with us.
Uh, Dennis?
Yeah, it sounds like a good plan. Um, are you also going to be providing a opportunity for people to interact over maps uh, of the community and to jot down ideas relating to specifics parts of our neighborhoods and community areas?
Yes, I'll let Lily expand on that, but I, first I'll just mention that the Urbana Places map on the website allows you to go in and put a pin on an exact spot in Urbana. And we've already seen some uh, feedback on that. So people can pin, they'll, they can remark about that, they can also upload a photo. So that's one way with the website, but I'll let Lily kind of expand on some other aspects of uh, of mapping. That's really her area of expertise.
Yeah, um, just briefly, uh, we're just, as we're just getting started, um, we're, see that this map that Jason's pulling up is one that is really helpful for um, collecting destinations and comments and feedback. But we're also going to be doing um, as time uh, progresses, that part of that targeted outreach campaign is going to be, have a mapping aspect to it. We want to kind of try to recreate some of the, the feedback tools that were, you can see on the website. That's the kind of information they like, just dig deeper with, with targeted audiences. We um, cur- currently can't have a large open, open house where there's maybe the traditional sticker dot mapping and markers and cranks. But we hope to maybe eventually get to that point, but at the, in the meantime, there's a lot of different tools. What you're seeing that Urbana Places mapping tool is actually one that um, is using a um, very, very inexpensive Mapbox um, JavaScript toolkit. So that's something that we're kind of looking into and exploring and how to bring that to people's computers.
Great.
Any other questions?
And Bill, I, I have to give a shout out to you because I think you were the one that suggested that we have a parent in that video. So kudo, kudos to you for thinking of that.
I noticed that, thanks.
She actually stood at her home in uh, um, the suburbs of Chicago.
Zoom has its advantages, I guess.
I do want to let the community know that we're using the comp plan as an educational tool as well. So over the years, we would um, frequently get calls from teachers and organizations um, who are, especially teachers who are working with their students to do units on, on city government and civics and start that sort of thing. So part of the um, comp plan and, and a bunch of videos have been made of interviews with the heads of every taxing body in Champagne County with a pretty thorough explanation of how the, what the organizations do, how much money they spend, um, what part of your tax dollar they get and just what their role in Champagne County is. So we hope that this um, this entire process not only will inform a vision for the future and growth in, in the city, but and, and how it lives, but also as a way for people to actually learn about their community and be a um, you know, a living document and a useful tool. So encourage everybody to visit the website often.
And we do have that first series is up there, Diane, the, the videos that we did with all the community groups. So um, I think we have eleven of those, is that right Lily, you're on the, on the site?
That sounds about right, it's quite a few.
Yeah, and then we're going to be, keep adding, like Diane said, um, you know, this is just the first series, it's kind of get to know, we call it get to know your community services providers. So it really does explain in detail by the leaders of those groups, which again, very gracious of them to give up their time. But we'll continue to add videos that provide additional information as we go through the process.
Any other comments, questions? Well, great, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Please share these links widely. All right, we'll move on to public input. Um, first on the list is Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Okay, Jase, or um, Dr. Underwood, you're in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
At last, Lord have mercy Jesus, I'm finally being able to get in, thank you Jason. Um, yes, my hand, my hand is raised. Um, I just want to make a quick comment. Um, uh, I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and I see some first steps uh, in that area. And as I fore stated on last week, um, uh, I saw a first step, hopefully it will be passed. Um, but like uh, a lot of the uh, people, uh, we did people quote unquote stated in their input, we certainly would like some action steps. And I know sometime it takes time, but I hope we don't do it like um, the nineteen fifties uh, when they said all deliberate speed, everybody know about that, if not research it. All deliberate speed, we want more than all deliberate speed. We don't want it to take fifty years. So uh, we're looking forward to actions. Um, uh, as we, once this is passed, uh, people have some good ideas and we hope that we take them now and forever. Because we are in America and we don't want to ever forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next person to speak, Eldress Melinda Carr.
Good evening.
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to um, really speak about um, the resolution that's going to be right before the council. I sent some comments and I'm just going to read the comments that I sent um, on the Resolution Committee to End Structural Racism and Achieve Racial Equity. Is a great start in publicly declaring the city of Urbana's general position and the intent has been stated to bring aware, awareness of this practice in the history of the, of the city of Urbana. Based on the explanation at the February first committee of the whole meeting, understanding that there will not be specific or future actions included at this time for the city of Urbana. Therefore, the people of Urbana must continue to hold our city officials accountable to stand on the principles outlined in the resolution to ensure the racial equity is achieved. Both now and in the transition to new leadership, we know that you have an awesome responsibility in guiding city, city government for the people of Urbana. We appreciate the service of our city officials in working toward this end. Um, I suggested some stronger language in a few areas of the less, of the resolution and then some minor um, edits um, that I copied in the email. And I just wanted to, the areas where there are more significant changes. Um, on the, I think this was page three. Um, it talks about um, it will not be overcome without a concerted and sustained instead of effort, I uh, it's just a commitment by all. And then in the next section, I carried over um, that, I'm not going to have time to go through all of this, but um, while our community and government, the section one evolves away from the habitual practice and widespread acceptance of racism and, and white supremacy and is becoming a more loving community. So I added that. Um, and then assist, sentence down further, if the city is to actualize the, not change commandments to principles, rights and powers of our constitution. Um, we must be conscious. Um, down further and at, in that section, the mayor and city council and henceforth speak truth to the hate and, or it could be hatred and big with bigotry of white supremacy. Um, and shall publicly announce everything else. I didn't, I left that as is, the second section or the last section, um, page four, the city of Urbana recognizes that it will take additional instead of effort, commitment, courage and determination to align our actions with our aspirations. And then I added, in order to carry out the vital needs expressed by the people of Urbana. And that kind of goes back to the beginning, what we said, trying to um, make sure the needs of the, of the um, people are uh, taken care of. And then I, the next sentence, the subversiveness of white privilege includes a double standard of imposing, I didn't imposing responsibilities and, and I added restrictions. where there aren't unequal rights and inequitable opportunities. The last, next to the last sentence, the city should resolve to constantly challenge ourselves. And then I added to become strong leaders in creative, creating a government, community, society and economy. I didn't change or unshock up by the past. This is really good, this last part, but I won't, I didn't make any changes. But thank you for considering some of these changes and a couple of you responded. Thank you for your responses. That's all I had tonight. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you. Alan Max Axelrod.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm going to start on a less friendly note and then I'm going to go on to some more positive remarks. So one, when you're an academic and you publish things that are factually inaccurate, you retract that publication. Now, the reason that I mentioned that is because there's an academic among you who published on a community listserv factually inaccurate information. As engineers, we have to pass ethical exams. And it concerns me the matter of governance where the letter, email was signed not as a candidate, not as a private person, but as a member of this body. I'm very concerned about the lack of retraction thus far. And I'm interested to know if there will be a retraction of the statements made by one Eric Sax. The reason for this is because similar to the same exact things that Daniel Chenoweth was spreading regarding misinformation in the community, to do a perverse sort of inoculation so that people would dismiss the actual issues, thinking that it is conspiratorial or some sort of abstract theory instead of minor but impactful professional misconduct. So, and as I texted to you, I do not consider you the perpetrator of this misinformation campaign. But I do ask in the interest of being an ethical public official, just like you are an ethical, presumably public employee, that you retract that email on the Western Urbana listserv. I hope to find out that to be the case. Thank you for adding the section about challenging yourselves in the resolution. I'll take it. The main thing that I want to suggest regarding the imagine Urbana is that due to community distrust and due to the fact that you can see the IP addresses of people going onto the website and therefore can reasonably establish their residency because it would be an awfully petty thing for someone to have a VPN just to spoof in Urbana domain, just so that they could have some input on how the city runs something. I ask that you remove the registration or login requirements so that people who have been hassled or treated unfairly by this body will not have to worry about whether or not their comments will be ignored because of their name or their past experiences with people in this body. The other aspect is due to outreach efforts. See, I've done a lot of canvassing in this community. And one of the things that I've consistently found is that there are gathering points that you can go to to get rich data sets to help try to learn more about the community. I would like to suggest that the food pantries be one of the places where you make that information available. And this isn't a casual suggestion. That was the very premise that I had joined Align I Fighting Hunger back in 2017 specifically to try and do. Unfortunately, they were too overburdened to implement it and there was no one who was willing to collaborate on that particular aspect. So I hope that those two things are taken into account. And also you still all owe an apology to Buy Back By Black Shandana. Thank you.
Next up is Tracy Chan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Last week I brought up action items that the city could do to show that the resolution committing to end structural racism would result in meaningful change and action by the city. I spoke about how the city should stop discriminating in job ads and CPR reappointments. I've lost count how many times I brought up how city city leadership and Urbana Police Department leadership has not apologized or acknowledged the damage done to Aliyah Lewis. We have not heard from Chief Seraphin exactly how police staff will be held accountable. This is not the only police misconduct incident that has not been adequately addressed. It has been two months since I brought up the Taser incident from 2019 where Deputy Chief Sells suppressed video evidence to hide what looked like police misconduct. I asked before and I'll ask again, have any of you guys watched the Taser videos and the CPR meetings? What did you think of Sells' actions and what do you think after watching the Taser incident? Maybe you guys can comment about it today. We've been talking about these issues for close to a year. We've seen Urbana violating FOIA laws. We've seen Mayor Marlin speak dishonestly to the public. We've seen all of you up there try to silence the public just because you don't like the criticism. My name has been smeared by the city attorney and your contracted attorneys who resorted to attacking my character just to defend the city's actions. And my God, I just heard Lamont Peppers say we strive to make public input accessible to everyone in the video you guys just played. And I was muted by Peppers himself when I mentioned Chief Seraphin's name during a listening session. I recently listened to AOC's heartfelt discussion with the public about her experience in the Capitol riots. AOC was responding to people who called others to move on and not dwell on the incident. When AOC said, we can't move on without accountability, it struck a chord with me and probably many of us who have been speaking up week after week. Mayor Marlin has mentioned moving forward several times. And the hope is that resolutions and the revised use of policy will help us move on. But no, we can't move on without accountability. We can't move on without the city apologizing and acknowledging all that went wrong. All the steps that were taken that made us the public so sad, so upset and so disappointed with our current government. Asking us to just move on is like saying it's okay to repeat those missteps. Is it really that hard to say that you made a mistake, that the city made a mistake? Can we have a genuine discussion on how to remedy these mistakes? Thank you.
Benjamin Bopray.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Bopray. I live in Champaign. I'm a citizen representative for the Champaign County Reentry Council, but tonight I'm just talking on my own behalf. Wanted to express my support for the resolution committing the city to end structural racism and to achieve equity. I also wanted to echo other comments demanding substantive action afterwards. I think that's important. Otherwise, you'll lose even more trust. I think this resolution on its own is important, though, especially these days with this war on objective truth that is happening throughout our nation and locally. It's important. It's critical for all of us to stand up for the objective truth right now. W E B DuBois said that we don't win this fight with voting alone, but by persistent, unceasing agitation, by hammering at the truth. And I believe that I I think Urbana has proven that over the years with the Ellis Drive six, fighting segregated schools based on information that the schools were having disparate impacts. As segregated groups, especially the, is it the hay school? It took a fight and the fight wasn't over. Right away, there were people running for school board, trying to overturn it. I believe that fight continues on to this day. Part of the research I do for the reentry council involves a lot of local data, local statistics. And there are racial disparities across all systems here. Education, criminal justice, housing, as we've seen recently with health and COVID. These systems aren't isolated. They the disparities from one feed into the other. They're propagated from one to the other and sometimes even amplified in the case of the criminal justice system. I encourage future action to involve collaboration across these systems, across these bureaucracies. Because a lot of colorblind language can be used to propagate those disparities just by saying, hey, that's not our fault that, you know, the clients coming in from this particular system are already, you know, disparately impacted. That we have to take responsibility for when we see those disparities to do something about them and collaborate across systems. Otherwise, we're just as responsible. Urge you to take seriously the concerns of the NAACP and the ACLU on the use of force. We can't just do boilerplate, lexible liability language for use of force anymore. If we're focused so much on legal liability, I mean, I realize it has to be part of the concern, but it can't be the only concern. Otherwise, this turns into a Milgram's experiment where people are just covering their own butts and not making sure that rights are protected. We aren't addressing the safety issues that these officers face, why they're so afraid, why they are ready to kill for people touching their waistband. Because they have to make a split second decision that that person might be armed. We have to address the problems that are leading to these life and death situations that are ending very poorly for people who don't look like me. Whereas people who look like me are given the benefit of the doubt are considered less of a threat, aren't necessarily considered someone who has to be looked at as if they need to live or die in the next split second. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak, Colin Dodson.
Hi, thank you. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, you are.
So these are some tough acts to follow. I generally agree with the overwhelming majority of points raised by the citizens of Urbana so far. There's a little bit more I'd like to say, though I risk repeating much of what has been said with respect to the resolution you're looking at tonight. I'll say that I hope you pass it. Before I before I dig into that, though, I do have a brief question with regard to public input in a more general sense, which is to say that I understand the need for orderly and effective meetings when conducting official city business. However, to me, that leaves an open question, which is to say, you know, given that council meetings and committee of the whole meetings are not the place for an active dialogue between the people of Urbana and our elected city government, then what is? So I'll leave that as kind of an open question to sort of stew on. And so I'll move on to the resolution on ending structural racism. And, you know, again, the main thing that I would, I want to really reiterate that's been said several times tonight is that it is absolutely essential that, you know, the work doesn't end when the resolution is passed. And I'm sure that to a certain degree, all of you know this, but, you know, the thing is that when looking at something like white supremacy, it's really, really critical that we understand that this isn't just a personal moral failure, but a product of a deeply inequitable and unjust social system. And that ultimately challenging white supremacy and white privilege will be deeply uncomfortable. I mean, we have to look at things like how do real estate interests function in our community? What's the relationship of police policy? You know, how can we extend our views of human rights to more than just an anti discrimination ordinance? You know, when it comes down to it, like ultimately what I'm getting at and no shade, I'm honestly speaking here, no shade. We need substance and not superficial posturing. And I am afraid that it's it's really too easy for something like this as well intentioned and as well written as it is. Thank you, Sharice, for all of your work on it. Too easily. And I've seen this on boards and in in government bodies all too often that it ends there. It ends with a Black Lives Matter mural on the main street in a town, but no structural changes. And we really need those structural changes to achieve genuine justice in our community. Thank you.
Next up is Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. My name's Meg McDonald. My pronouns are she, they. There's a lot to talk about tonight. I don't really have anything written out. I'm just, I have some bullet points and I'll touch on them. As far as the resolution, I said my piece last week, hopefully that was listened to. I wanted to just move on, though, and talk about Amosakote and see, say that it wasn't on the agenda as expected. In case anybody listening doesn't know, Amosakote is an asphalt production company that's been in Ward five for a long time. It was brought up at a city council meeting a few weeks ago about their move. And for some reason, they have applied for a lifetime operating permit at their current location. And it's not clear why they did that because they might already have that permit on file. And so there's a Facebook group called the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association Facebook group. And that's a lot where the discussion has been had so far. So I was surprised to see that there wasn't an update on that on the agenda because that was said in the Historic East Urbana Facebook group. But there will be press on it and I want to thank Dennis for his willingness to provide information about that. People are really concerned in Ward five as far as what I've heard and I'm sure as Dennis has heard and the mayor's heard. They're scared that Amosakote isn't moving, that this is some kind of petty move in response to the neighborhood's concerns. So please just be forthcoming and as transparent as possible. Like when I ask, what information have you requested? It would be helpful to know, like Amosakote, we've requested information from them, but they still haven't gotten that to us, to you. So that's a little concerning. I guess I'll move on to my next point since I only have two minutes left, which five minutes would be nice. But anyway, just the drama with all this city politics has been really disheartening. And I know you all are probably like, oh, says you, but I'm, I was a concerned citizen. I didn't plan on running for city council. I didn't plan on doing any of this. I think I came in concerned when I saw a police harassment incident on my street in Ward five, I started showing up and then that was like in February or March. And then the Aliyah Lewis thing happened in April. And honestly, I've been showing up to city council meetings since 2016 on and off. And so it's just, it's, it's just really sad that this is how people in the township, people on city council, this is how you all react to newcomers coming forward and volunteering their time. And especially Eric Sax, I saw that email. That was really disheartening. What do you, what are you talking about? The the future of the city is truly at stake. It's under attack. It's not just like a Ward two issue. I feel for Christopher Hansen. He is also just somebody who was wronged by the city and is a concerned citizen and has just been coming forward and trying to get somebody to be held accountable. And you all are just basically smearing citizens that are trying to represent their ward because you all have seemingly failed to do that. So, and or at least genuinely listen. I didn't have anything planned. Imagine Urbana, that sounds great and all, but we've been giving you extensive input. So I don't know why that there's this like extra step. Like it's hard enough to get people to show up to city council meetings. Why are you now going to be like? Why are you now going to be like, well, no, public input in the city council isn't the place to really give input about the city. We want to have like a consolidated space. Now, I don't, I don't really understand that. It makes it harder on people. It doesn't make them more accessible. Um, and yeah, the snowplows thing, I think if we defunded the police, there'd probably be more money to actually protect people on the streets. So let's get that fixed. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, just for the community's um information, the city administrator will be giving an update on Amosakote during the reports of officers tonight. Uh, next up is John Kraft.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about the email that went out on the listserv. I am one of the Edgar County watchdogs. And I can say with 100% truth that we are not out to destroy local governments. We do not have a goal of destroying local governments. We do not have a goal of installing people into local governments. I know where Mr. Sacks got this information. And I would just appreciate if he would research that person that gave him this information, find out what her motivation is. Because I could tell you right now, her motivation is not good. I do know that once we found out that she lied in a sworn document to a court in Lake County, Florida, that impugned her reputable employer in that sworn document in an attempt to get an order of protection against one of her neighbors. Uh, when we brought that out and brought it to the public's attention, I believe she was fired from that job. And her whole purpose in life right now is to extract some type of sick revenge on the people that outed her lies to the court in the sworn statement. We are not part of any patriot movement. We're not extreme right wing. We are for good governments, governance and good governance that follows these statutes as they are written. As far as comments like um it, they have been described on the internet as extreme right wing. That person I talked about, she wrote that herself. So there's no being described on the internet as, she wrote that. She opened up four websites so far, and there's more coming. Each one points to the other with the same uh libelous, slanderous language in it that is 100% false. And Mr. Sacks, I don't feel no ill will towards you for forwarding it. I just wish you would have researched the information that she has on those websites before you forward it to a listserv of 500 people. And I would also hope that you would research that, contact us, call us up. My phone number is on my FOIA request. I'll talk to you. I'll drive to Urbana, have coffee with you, and we can discuss everything in a peaceful environment. We have no ill will towards anybody, and I wish you would research that, retract that, that listserv email, and write an apology. I came to Urbana to show it, to show up at a meeting because we were getting several emails that the city was uh not uh, well, the city instituted an unreasonable public comment policy. I believe that to be true. I attended several meetings, witnessed it, and then we filed a lawsuit. The judge will decide, ultimately decide whether the city had an unreasonable policy or not. I was informed that the city uh attempted to uh get money for FOIA requests that they shouldn't have got. So I FOIA'd for the names of the people that paid that money. It was denied. I believed I should have gotten those names. So I sued to get those names. It's about six names. Um, and a judge will ultimately decide that issue. So once again, please retract the email and please apologize.
Next up is Haki.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Haki, or Drake, uh resident of Champaign, recent graduate of the University of Illinois. Um, I'm tired. Uh, I think I'm just tired of, you know, work, but of course, we don't continue to work. Uh, but I'm tired of input being reduced to simply hearing the concerns of a few individuals, but then the implementation of a program or a project without that same input of continue, for that, that, without the same uh continuation of input from the people and from the community. I remember something about the Imagine, you know, the Imagine Urbana sounds really well, and I, and I, again, and I said it last week as well. I hope that those uh racial pod discussions continue uh because Imagine Urbana will not uh uh save Urbana from racism, or, you know, or the resolution is not going to save Re- uh Urbana from racism. Again, that has to be a continual uh continual effort uh on you all to uh ensure that the people, especially the people that are out there in the communities, out there on the streets for the people, that they are actively involved with the implementation and the creation of programs and said rollout of programs. When we're talking about university students being involved with Urbana, who's going to introduce them to the community? Not the University of Illinois. The University of Illinois does not have a great relationship with the community. It's going to be up to the students to make that type of relationship. And uh one of the only students that have made, that have uh actively tried to make that a relationship happen is me, Allison, Dimitri, other black students in BSFR, but I have been out here and I am the one that has helped increase that community and campus uh collaboration, the cooperation. So you have, so you must include the organizations that have connected the community in order to uh be a part of the Imagine Urbana and to ensure that those organizations are actively funded, to make sure that those organizations are actively equipped to carry out that mission. It can no longer be again, it's the same organizations all of the time. I am tired of all of those same organizations having the same power, being uh 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 pushed around and uh uh moved to the next person. The power has to be removed from this wheel of power that's going on in Urbana and Champaign, the nepotism. It has to end. When are we going to allow some new faces? When are we going to allow some new thinking? When are we going to allow some new voices, some new use, some new people, some new innovative ideas? Let's be honest here. There were discussions again about see you at home, not to ever discredit the work that is being done by the institutions, but there is structural violence. I'm currently doing a research with the professor about structural violence, that the structures in place are inherently violent. They are inherently racist, and that in order to ensure that people are being fed, that people are being uh uh given the resources necessary, either we, either we take over the structure and we completely rebrand it, or we must create our own structures. And I am wholeheartedly about the creation of our own structures. Trust me, the people have been coming to the new structure since May of 2020. The people have been coming to the new structure. The structure that we are building is being built right now. Either you ride along with that new structure, or you're going to allow the resolution to, to wither away to simply just words of nothingness. We have to ensure real action. We also have to ensure that we are included. And let me speak to my brothers and sisters and my allies, and my non-binary allies as well. They will give us something, not say it's because of us. We must continue to work and get whatever it means. We get it, move on forward with depression escalation. I'm ready to move on and organize what you all into 2021 because uh I will. We will be at the table, or we will construct the table and remove and dismantle the last one. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Next up is Justin Hendricks.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Justin Michael Hendricks, Champaign, Urbana resident, Parkland College student, creator, Hit and Homeboy. Where we have provided services across Champaign, Urbana, across Champaign, Urbana at an alarming rapid rate since the summer, along with many other street activists, morning, noon, and even after midnight hours, as the world doesn't stop outside the office hours. Tomorrow, please tune into our series, Black Mental Health Matters, every Tuesday for the month of February at 6 o'clock. Tomorrow, our discussion will be my mental health in high school and young people. Last week, we did discuss the LGBTQ community at large. Please make sure you tune in. We have more special guests from Champaign and the state and surrounding states. For more information, go to Hit and Homeboy on Facebook, that's H I T N H O M E B O Y. Let's get to it. I'll say this, if you're not going to name names, leave it on the playground. To hear people like Ms. Wayne Williams speak with such cattiness towards people who quote unquote voted for you, niece, let that hurt go. Danielle, now let's get to it, little girl. What we won't do is act as if we can't multitask outside of office hours and sit on here hiding our hands yet on social media platforms trying to flex when saying things like this. To be mansplained about my office in the middle of this has been much, and frankly exposes how little you know about our work. Did you know we just, we just get a call like this one every six minutes at the township? What I do know is this, those every six minutes are not after midnight. Those every six minutes are not on the weekends as well, as when using those social media platforms to make a statement as we don't mansplain. We state facts. Taking that victim role won't work here. Move on with it. But I'll continue as you stated. Y'all know how to find me. If you will not speak to me directly, I'm going to chalk it up as political posturing and keep doing the work because that is what we, that's what my office does. My office is the township. It's not Danielle's township. We do the work. I understand that and I applaud it. But when you say things like, y'all know how to find me, y'all know how to find me, I don't think you want any of this smoke, ready or not. Don't make statements like that. I wish I had the same turnaround as when men lie, women lie, but numbers don't. As I emailed you back in October to collaborate with you, yet I was not met until recently with the response. You may want to say you're busy. I don't dispute that, but political, obviously you are, as I'm not. I don't belong to a party. And last time I checked, it's your name on endorsements, commercials everywhere I see, not mine. I hope that that money's coming out your personal pockets, not the township's and anybody else's. I keep my work and those politics separate as I don't engage them together. You should try the same, my love. This is what happens when you put yourself and your feelings in a situation that did not criticize your character. However, you chose to step out and you missed, as it was a missed opportunity when giving work and work hours to someone that was a black queer girl in need. You gave office hours for help. Excuse me, the disrespect in that, as my grandmother would say, you showed your slip. Pull it up, to quote another person in a political position. Not sure who needs to hear this, but I'm sick of encouraging of encountering posts that are trying to dunk on, on the township supervisor's office and their leadership. It's not inecipatory, it's littering. And to note, yes, Emily Rorique, that status of the township was cute this morning, as I'd never discredit them. But what I will say is this, the next time, make sure you know I read messages, and quite frankly, I don't approve of those. Thank you to those individuals who, and the person who is running in Ward, in this ward, that I do know that is literally making sacrifices for a black woman and a black person without having to make clout for it, yet not looking for white saviorship, as I have seen since the summer with a lot of you and misused and mistreated community. I hope that Ward votes for her, as I see her playing a role not in white leadership and white saviorship. In closing, I suggest you get a street team that is dedicated to working after midnight, meaning 11 to a, 11 to seven and even weekends. There is a trans population. There also is a non-gender, non, a non-genetic forming and two intersex people that live in the city, but you wouldn't know that if you engage in the streets because they need things. Oh, and don't forget, I'm from the streets and we can fill yours up anytime. In closing, thank you.
Justin, your time's up. Um, last uh to speak, Christopher Hansen.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, uh, so my name is Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. Um, it's been about 10 months since uh the Alea Lewis arrest, and that brought a lot of uh attention to the city council. And um, one of the statements that we heard over and over uh after that and after the uh George Floyd incident, um, from this council, we heard, you know, change isn't going to happen overnight. Change isn't going to happen overnight. We heard that repeatedly, and it stretched out for weeks, and I think we, even months later, we heard that same statement. Change isn't going to happen overnight, and now it's 10 months later from the Alea Lewis incident. And as a reminder, you know, some people have been working on issues of race disparity and uh police reform misconduct for decades. And so uh I've noticed you stopped saying change isn't going to happen overnight because you probably realized how, how silly it is at this point. But we do have a resolution before us where it doesn't indicate any actual change or it doesn't indicate any action for change at least, and I think you've heard that from a lot of community members tonight. And so I strongly encourage you to add just anything, anything actually, that is actual action to this resolution before you pass it. Um, and you heard a good number of examples of those already uh this weekend last. Um, I was also not excited to see our community engagement coordinator uh involved in the Imagine Urbana process. I mean, this is someone who, you know, actively muted a member of the public for trying to speak. Um, I I don't think, you know, muting people when they're trying to get public input is what a community engagement coordinator should be doing. But here in Urbana, we tend to name things the opposite of what they are, which is one of the reasons I'm concerned about this resolution because when we do these things where we just kind of name something and it's posturing, it tends to be a cover for the fact that we're not going to actually take any action. Uh, and so that's what really concerns me about it, but. And someone earlier uh regarding this resolution said that um because the resolution has no action, it it's still up to the people uh to to hold the government accountable, and that brings us to this item on the agenda, the FOIA officer Ross McNeil, this appointment. Um, Urbana has done a great number of unlawful things in regards to public records, and uh you're aware of that from the Illinois Attorney General, and you're aware of that from the Champaign County Courts. Um, and so it's, it's, there's no really real question of that, but the problem is you keep appointing people who are, are going to use the same tactics. And, you know, Mr. McNeil has been doing the same things that Kirk Porman was doing in terms of FOIA requests. And so now it it does not say in city code that the city council has to approve the FOIA officer appointment. In fact, I don't think it's written in city code how that designation happens. Um, so this appointment is essentially being brought before you, I guess, as a courtesy, but I do hope you'll discuss it. And um, I mean, you don't have much on your agenda tonight, so uh you could discuss that, and you could discuss what action item you could add to this resolution. And uh I hope you'll, I I think you should discuss whether you're going to bring the position of FOIA officer back to the city clerk's office because it it really matters to the voters a lot right now, right? I mean, because we have a city clerk election and they're talking about records. Tatiana Amens is talking about records. So if it's the intent of this body to not have the city clerk be FOIA officer going forward, I think you should make that clear to the public. Um, and yeah, I, Mr. Sacks, uh, I I would like to know from this body if it is everyone's contention that all of the new candidates running are part of a right wing extremist uh takeover group that is trying to overthrow democracy? Or is that just the contention of Mr. Sacks? Because that's the implication he made. He didn't just make that implication about one person. He said it was across the entire ballot that this was happening. Um, and I think this body should issue some kind of statement in regards to that, and if the rest of you agree with that, or if that's just someone's personal.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And that looks like we're finished with public input for this evening. We'll move on to council input and communications. Jason, do you want to put the timer up again, please? Uh, Sharice.
I'm just gonna start off with.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure we get the three minute timer going so we uh follow our rules.
Okey dokey.
I've got one. I started one. Oh, there we go. Okay.
I'm just gonna start off with um regarding the resolution. The resolution is not an ordinance. I don't have actionable, actionable, what people have have called actionable uh policy in there because a resolution doesn't do that. I'm not trying to cut the feet off of the future. I don't want to hold anybody to a a particular. feet off of the future. I don't want to hold anybody to, uh, a particular sort of, of policy that in a few years may have to be changed. Um, my hope is that, and, and basically what I've wanted, what I wanted to do with this is, uh, have a Sankofa moment, so to speak. Uh, for those of you that don't know what Sankofa means, it is basically means that you reach back into the past so that you can have more of a progressive future. You bring that, that past present, you talk about it, you, you accept it, and you work at not repeating it. And so, what I, um, what I'm hoping is that this is a good first step. Um, I've gotten several ideas, uh, and, 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 uh, and came up actually with some more this weekend, which we will be discussing when we come to the resolution. Um, and added, edited and added, uh, even other stuff to the, to the, uh, the resolution, that things that I thought were pertinent. Um, and it is not posturing, it is hopefully setting a path and a first step on a path where the city can go. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Any other council comments? Mary Alice, and then Bill.
Um, I just wanted to let council know, the public know, that I've been working on a resolution that addresses some of the, um, police accountability and some steps that we as a council can take, um, and, and some affirmation of de-escalation. So that should be on the committee of the whole agenda for next week. And, um, several people have given me comment and feedback about that. So I, I really appreciate that, and I look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Bill Brown?
Yeah, just a, a brief update from BPEC, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Um, we have, uh, I'll be making a couple of presentations sometime over the next few weeks. One will be our annual report. Now, there will be a change in the recommendation on the, uh, Kickapoo Railroad Connectivity Study from 2018. You might remember that there were several options presented on how to connect the, uh, Weaver Park to the trailhead. And we discussed that, um, at our last meeting and made a recommendation. So I have a short presentation on that and, um, what went into that discussion. Um, we also have a, a new youth member position for, uh, high school age youth, 14 to 17. Uh, so we'll be putting out an announcement and application for that pretty soon. And just thanks, uh, people that have been shoveling your walk and getting out there into zero degrees and getting the ice off, it's really appreciated. And, um, I don't think that we have, you know, our, uh, our mandatory snow removal ordinance covers a downtown area and a couple of other areas, but it doesn't go into effect until the public works director, um, uh, declares a snow emergency. And that hasn't been triggered because we hasn't have, haven't had enough snow. It looks like we'll just get small accumulation. So that may not get triggered. But, um, you know, if you can get out there and, and keep the snow, keep the walks clean as it comes down, it really is appreciated before it gets icy. Thanks.
Dennis, Dennis?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly, um, comment about the Amosakot situation. That's a, a concern for, uh, neighbors in my Eric, Eric neighborhood. Um, we, I did have a conversation, a personal conversation with Chris Presnell, um, last week. Uh, he's the coordinator of the Environmental Justice for the Illinois, um, Environmental Protection Agency in Springfield. Um, he did, he, probably were going to be, uh, getting an update from, uh, Carol Mitten, a little, little bit later in the meeting. But my understanding is that, uh, there is a question about whether the, uh, lifetime permit is actually necessary. There might be one in the books. They need to do some research on that, uh, to see if it's, it's really a, uh, a formality, or if it's unnecessary. And he, he told me that lifetime didn't mean lifetime. It just means that it, that until further notice or until something else, um, is changing, that, uh, you know, these are just, um, formalities of certain sense. And the word lifetime doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be forever. Like, it does, that the, the permit that was requested is for the plant that's on University Avenue. I thought perhaps it was going to be for the plant that was being constructed up in Celine, see, on Celine Court in the industrial area north of town. And finally, uh, he did say that their outreach officer was going to be, um, considering opening up a, a public input session somehow in our community. And we kind of hope to see that we have that opportunity to, uh, discuss our concerns as a community and hear his comments about possible amelioration of the situation. So hope to hear more about it from Carol Mitten. Thanks.
Any other council comments? Okay, thank you. Um, there are no additions to the agenda. No unfinished business tonight. We'll go on to the, um, reports of the standing committees. And there's one item on there, which is the Resolution 2021 dash 02 dash 005R, which is the Resolution Committing to End Structural Racism and Achieve Racial Equity. And this, this was brought forward by council members Hersi and Woo. Did either of you want to speak to this more?
Yes.
I just, uh, on the agenda, it says that Sharice was, um, chair at the committee meeting last week. So when you, you ready for the, um, motion, I was actually chair, so I'll make the motion to get it on the table.
Thank you.
I can second that motion. Are we, are we, do we have a motion?
Why don't I do that?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, the committee of the whole met last week, and we forwarded one resolution, number 2021 dash 02 dash 005R, Resolution Committing to End Structural Racism and Achieve Racial Equity, um, to the city council with recommendation for approval, um, for the committee. I so moved.
And, and go ahead, Sharice. I think, I, yes, I think Sharice should second. Okay, discussion.
Um,
Yes, go ahead.
Um, um, as I said earlier in my comment, there, that, um, there, I did make some changes, and I think that we have to, as a council, approve the amendments on the, on, in the changes. And I, everyone got, uh, should have gotten a copy of that. Did everyone get a copy of that online?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sharice, are the changes incorporated into the copy of the, uh, resolution that was posted with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I need to go, Bill, do I need to go through those one by one and, and we do a vote on them? Or?
Um, no, I, I think we could just say, as, as, um, as presented. So this copy that we just got today is, was on the website?
Um, no.
Okay.
That's why I was wondering if we'd have to say something about the amendments and, and then approve amendments, or how do we go about doing that?
Yeah, you probably ought to go through, and I would say, um, read, read the parts that are new, the red parts.
Okay. And for some reason, I can't find my redlined area, but I'm pretty sure I know where everything is.
I could, I could do it if you want.
Go ahead.
All right. So the changes that were recommended by, um, council members Hersi and Woo were in the, let's see, in the whereas it starts out, whereas issues of segregation and racial oppression became particularly acute in the decades following World War II, replaces WW2 with the words World War, numerals two. Um, then the next whereas below that, um, where there, there was a whereas added after that, whereas from its founding in 1867 through the 1940s, University of Illinois denied campus housing to black students, therefore requiring them to seek out and pay for housing within the black community, um, north end, creating additional psychological and physical stress to their college experience.
Mm-hmm.
And then three whereas is down from there, uh, whether there was a correction in, uh, um, spelling of the line I went. And then whereas after that is whereas white supremacy and racial discrimination continued to this day, both institutionalized and from impotent, impotent individuals. And then nationwide, black Americans continue to be marginalized within the healthcare system and suffered deleterious outcomes, as exemplified by a death rate from COVID-19 that's 3.57 times higher than white Americans. And that has a, um, footnote to the source. Luckily, there is widespread community support for an offensive former university mascot. Local transportation companies discriminate against immigrants from Asian countries, and in Urbana, the black community continues to face disparate outcomes at traffic stops. So that one had several changes. Um, and then in section one of the resolved part.
Yes.
Um, the last sentence says, "The mayor and city council will henceforth speak truth to the hate and bigotry of white supremacy instead of power of white supremacy."
Mm-hmm.
Then in section two, oh, no changes. I think that was it, wasn't it?
I think that's it.
Any discussion?
So is there, do we need a motion for the amendment?
Yes, it would be, it would be a motion for, um, the resolution as amended.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, um, to accept the amended language.
I'll second.
Um, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Do we need to vote on those amendments, Phyllis?
Um, yeah, I, I, discussion. I mean, I, I have one comment on the, um, there were a couple of others that Aldous, Melinda Carr, recommended that I thought would be good. I don't know, there was one, um, in section one of the res, of the resolved part, changing, um, commandments to actualize the commandments of our constitution to, uh, principles, rights, and powers of our constitution. I don't know if constitution has commandments. Are people okay with that one?
I am. I'd make, I'd move that we adopt that. So that, that text change.
To make that principles, rights, and powers.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um,
There we go. That's why there were some things that I changed and some things I didn't have felt like the, it was something that the council itself could, uh, could discuss as well.
And then the other one I thought, um, was good in the, in section two, second sentence, where it says the subversiveness of white privilege includes a double standard of responsibilities when there are unequal rights and inequitable opportunities. She suggested the subversiveness of white privilege includes a double standard of imposing responsibilities and restrictions when there are unequal rights and inequitable opportunities. I think it, um, it parallels better, and it, 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 uh, enforces imposing responsibilities rather than just responsibilities. People okay with that one, too? Okay.
I, I accept that.
Um, ask that you, in your motion for amendments, toss in include those two changes.
I can accept that.
All right. So, um, does that mean we only need one amendment, right, if we accept those changes?
I think so.
Okay, all right.
It's, yeah.
I agree.
You want to restate your motion to include all of them?
Okay, um, I, uh, move that we amend, uh, Resolution Number 2021 02 005R to include the proposed changes, um, that Bill read, both, um, of the document that was sent today, as well as the two items that, um, the resident Melinda Carr suggested.
I second that.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Let's vote on those amendments first. Phyllis, could you call the roll? Yes. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And now we have the main res, main, uh, motion, which was to, uh, approve the resolution that was made by Bill Brown, seconded by, uh, Sharice Hersi. Any further discussion on the main motion? Mary Alice?
I, I just want to thank Sharice for all of her work and time and commitment that she had for, um, gathering the information on the historical impact of different groups here in our community. Um, and so I really just appreciate all the hard work that she put into this. Sharice?
Thank you, Mary Alice. But I also, I, um, can't take all the credit because, um, city staff was very helpful. And I really appreciated, um, the time that, um, that Will put in in doing the research, and he and Carol put in into helping me to articulate what, um, what I think needs to be said. And hopefully, I hope is that it will be, um, thought, it will be considered part of, of most policy going forward when we are making policy.
Any other comments? Dennis?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, also recommend that, uh, that we acknowledge really the good, the good work that Sharice has done on this. I appreciate the fact that this, this resolution, um, which I actually toyed, toyed about, um, drafting at a way earlier age, and to step back from that, because I think it's so appropriate that it comes from the representative of the black community in our, on our council at this time. And, uh, it, I think it's, I, I don't think that the text is at all, um, problematic to me. I think it's a, a accurate, uh, voice of concerns and issues that come from the very heart of our community of, uh, of, uh, for people who have experienced things which not all of us have had, opportunity to experience or to learn from. So, uh, I think it's a, it's a really great document. And I think that the, the action items that people have been, uh, looking for in this, in this, uh, resolution, I think Sharice explained it pretty well. This is not really an ordinance for changing policy. It's a resolution of intent. And I think that those other opportunities will come in the future. And I think that even Mary Alice Wu has, um, foreshadowed, uh, an attempt to accomplish some of these things very soon. So I think it's well done, and I support it.
Any other comments? All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Um, reports of special committees. I don't see any. Um, reports of officers. Carol did have an update on a couple of things.
Thanks. Um, so let me start with Amosakot, since that's come up a couple of times. So, um, I think as you heard, uh, from, um, Megan McDonald and from Dennis both, this application for a, um, lifetime operating permit, um, is probably, um, something that they don't need because they can revert to a prior lifetime operating permit. Um, but we did get the notification, and, um, we, we, staff and, and I actually also talked to Chris Presnell, who's the Environmental Justice Coordinator, and, and trying to learn more about the whole, um, process, about how, um, I E P A even uses that in these, in these applications. And there, as it turns out, even if, even if it was a new application, and there was one that we got notice of in January for the, for the facility up on Celine Court, um, there's no part of the application that requires any kind of findings or, or analysis regarding, um, environmental justice. And, um, and they usually use these as an educational opportunity. It, it's, it's not that you can, you, you can't really, um, at least as it was described to me, uh, do a lot in terms of making the case to oppose an application just strictly do a lot in terms of making the case to oppose an application just strictly based on environmental justice issues. Now, withstanding that, you know, we have asked, you know, we've received some information from Amosakote as the representative had, had committed to sharing with us. We're expecting to get some more detailed up, uh, information. But since it hasn't been, you know, readily forthcoming, we've also FOIA'd information from I E P A regarding the reporting that they've done over the past two years, the application itself, any notices of violation that received over the last two years for the University Avenue facility. So that, that's all being processed now, the FOIA request. Tomorrow, Scott Tess and I will be speaking to the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Commission because we would like to take the opportunity to bring the outreach coordinator from the Environmental Justice Section at I E P A out to the community. And we thought maybe we could do that in the context of the SAC meeting and have people and ourselves get better educated about, you know, what is really going on at this facility. They bring, not only their outreach folks, but they bring technical people. So once we get the, the technical data from I E P A, then we can share that. And then we can all get better educated about what exactly is going on at the facility. So that's, that's my update on Amosakote. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has about that. Okay. Wanted to, to move on and just share, you know, we heard last week at public comment about Illinois American Water shutting people's water off. And, and I hadn't been aware that they, they were doing that again. And, and so I, I got in touch with the folks over there. And they are in fact doing water shut offs again. They started last fall. And they, they have a process similar to other utilities where you can self-certify that if you have, if, if you're having trouble paying your bill in any way related to COVID, there's no documentation requirement. You just have to call. And I'm going to give the number. It's 1-800-422-2782. That's 1-800-422-2782. And you can just make a representation to Illinois American Water that you're having difficulty paying your bill because of COVID. And then that should be sufficient to avert a, a water shut off. And they, I asked for the number of shut offs in Champaign County and Urbana. And that information has not been provided. But what information was provided was that more than 1,000 customers in Champaign County have availed themselves of the opportunity to self-certify. They also made me aware of the fact that there's a Salvation Army program called H2O, which stands for Help to Others. And that is a, that is a program that provides funds to people to help them pay their water bills. So just wanted to give a brief update on that because we had heard about that. And I think I just wanted to follow up. And then finally, the last thing is, we had sent out a press release today just announcing to folks that we've had a little, a little COVID. I don't want to say it's an outbreak because, you know, we have pretty strict quarantining requirements. So we've had a couple of positive cases in Public Works and quarantine. Many employees are quarantining right now as a result. So we're pretty short-staffed in Public Works. And you might have noticed that if you're on a, you know, if you're on a side street that you're, that you're not enjoying the, the same level of service in terms of salt application and plowing. And we would just ask people to be patient while we work through this. We're focusing on primary and secondary routes. And, you know, we expect people after they work through their quarantine, they'll be back to work shortly. But, you know, just be patient and drive safely.
Any questions for Carol? Jared?
Uh, Carol, I was under the impression they folks have to also qualify for LIHEP in order to be excused from those. Is that not your understanding?
I can read you directly from the email that the fellow sent me. That just went away. Just, just a second, if you'd just bear with me a second. I had it up here just a second ago. I can't, I don't know why I can't pull it up on my phone suddenly. No, he, he said, "All you have to do is self-certify. There's no documentation requirement." And I, and I can send, I can forward the email tomorrow to, to you all so that you can see from the, from the horse's mouth what, what he said.
Okay, I, I mean, if that, if that's true, that's, that's great. I think two things ought to happen. The city should post about that on the city website and probably push it on our social media pages so that people are aware of that as well, especially that number as well, just because a lot of people may not be tuned into our meeting who might need that information, so.
Yeah, I just got it back. Sorry. I just got the email back. Okay. This is what he, this is exactly what he said. "We are not disconnecting low-income customers or customers who contact us." And then the number, again, 1-800-422-2782. "And self-certify without documentation as facing a financial hardship." "Shut offs are also being avoided by setting up deferred payment plans or by contacting the local Salvation Army office for our customer assistance program, H2O Help to Others." "Regardless of what triggers a disconnection, the earliest this would take place is approximately seven day, 17 days after the account went delinquent. During that period, multiple attempts to, to contact and inform the customer occurs, including a mailed letter and a phone call." So.
Okay, I'm, I mean, I, I was, uh, forwarded an email from, an email news blast that came out in November from the Illinois Commerce Commission. That says, uh, "Illinois American Water and Utility Services, blah, 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 have agreed to cease disconnection of participants in the state's LIHEP program or PIPP and those who self-report to the utility that they are suffering financial COVID-19 related hardship until March 31st, 2021."
Yeah, you just, you just read it. It says, "And those who self-certify." That, that's what he was saying.
Okay, I, I mean, I guess that just reads to me, it would be more clear if it said, "Or," not "And" because it sounds like LIHEP and.
Yeah.
PIPP and, not LIHEP or, or PIPP or. That's why I'm, I'm confused as to whether or not, they actually need both.
I can, I can follow, can you, can you send that to me?
I can send that to you.
Yeah, and I'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay, I'll send that to you right now.
Okay.
Eric?
So if they're allowing anyone who self-certifies to avoid shut off, why are they shutting anybody off? It seems to me that there may be people who fall through the cracks here, especially people who don't have the best access to communication tools. Is there any thoughts on why that might be, or did they say?
I didn't talk to, I didn't have an extensive conversation with the fellow from Illinois American Water, but you, you might recall Rick Manor came from UCSD not too long ago. And I started my journey to find the right person by talking to Rick. And they're not, they're not shutting off any, anyone's service right now. They're, they're shutting off no one. But one, one of the things he did share with me is that some of the people who are delinquent with UCSD were delinquent for a, a long time prior to COVID starting. So some of this is, you know, it, it's not, everyone who's delinquent is not delinquent because of COVID. So I think they're just, you know, saying, "All you have to do is tell us it's COVID and, and, and we'll, and we'll give you a pass." And if people aren't able to do that, then, you know, maybe they feel like, well, then there's other reasons. And those are the reasons that people typically get disconnected. You'd have, in terms of motivations for Illinois American Water, you'd have to talk to them.
Yeah, it just seems like, given that cleanliness is such an important factor for public health, regardless of the reason, it's a bit perhaps reckless to cut people off.
I, I understand your point.
I don't know, maybe they're open to a conversation. I don't know, but.
Well, we can invite someone to, to an upcoming meeting if you want to have a more extensive conversation.
If there's interest, I, I would be open to that if there's others interested.
Okay. Sharice?
Can I go back to the Amosakote thing real quickly?
Sure.
Because you said that we're, there, uh, there are going to be people coming to the plant for, for like an educational seminar or something to.
No, not to the plant. We, we are discussing tomorrow with the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Commission about possibly them hosting this community outreach opportunity where the, where the community outreach folks from I E P A and hopefully representatives of Amosakote would come. And we could have, you know, we could, we could have shared with the community this technical information that we expect to get through the FOIA, anything else that Amosakote shares with us. And then as a group, understand better what exactly is going on at the, at the plant. What do the reports mean? Have there been any notices of violation? Just have a better understanding. And, and how does environmental justice really get factored into the permitting process? If it, if it really does at all?
Okay, because I, because I, I know I would like more information about that as well because they are moving, uh, or they have moved across from 74, which also, you know, further north on 74, which, uh, which happens to be in my ward. And I, I would be interested in knowing, in getting that information.
I think we, we can all, there's, there's a lot to be learned. There's a lot of technical stuff. And so I think, I think we'd all be well-served by an opportunity to learn more.
Yes.
Dennis?
And on, on the note about Amosakote, I would be really curious to find out. I, I could imagine, and I understand that there's, there have been various kinds of scrubbers added to the emission element of their plant here in Urbana. And there, but, but even if you're capturing particles or moisture particles, or I don't know what kind of particles would be emitted during this process, it doesn't necessarily affect how things smell. But the odors of the asphalt itself, when it's heated. And so I was wondering if you could also ask about, does the Environmental Protection Agency of Illinois monitor or can control emissions of odor as well? Is there a way of filtering out or masking odor so that it's not? Because one of the complaints in the neighborhood, and it comes very close to home, is headaches and feeling of slight nausea for people who live near the plant when these things are emitted and occur. So it might not be particles, but there's something there that's making people feel very ill. So that's the concern. I don't know what kind of legislation there is concerning this part of it. That is a concern. So if you could explore that or have that explained to all of us, that would be a great thing.
Okay, I will do that.
Eric?
The key word there might be volatiles.
Okay.
Volatile organic compounds.
E O Cs.
E O Cs.
That's all I got.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. And there are three appointments I would submit for your approval. The first is to appoint Councilmember Eric Sacks to the Traffic Commission. He would be taking the place of Eric Jacobson, who had served as the Council Rep to the Traffic Commission and for Ward Two. So this appointment would go through the end of this council term. The second is, we're required to have officially name a city engineer. So I'm naming our interim Public Works Director, Tim Cowan, as the city engineer. And then FOIA officer, I'm appointing Ross McNeil. He's recently come onto the city as a permanent part-time employer, employee for the city of Urbana. He's a paralegal. He's handling most of the FOIA requests. They come into the clerk's office, go out through the clerk's office. But traditionally, the clerk's office has not managed the FOIA requests in the past. And so we're, we're returning to previous practice where this is a legal response and our legal department is coordinating FOIA responses with, with the clerk's assistance. But the city clerk's office does not handle the bulk of the FOIA processing. So is there a motion for these three?
Could I say one, one thing before you? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, I just wanted to clarify one thing, which is, it's not city code that requires the, the council to approve the FOIA officer. It's state law.
Thank you. Sharice, did you move?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Move for the, the, the approval of the commission appointments and staff, staff and board appointments for Public Works interim director, city engineer for Tim, Tim, oh gosh.
Tim Cowan?
Tim Cowan for public, for public, uh, city engineer for Ross McNeil as a FOIA officer and for Eric Sacks as on to the Traffic Commission.
There's a second. Was that Bill Colebrook?
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion? Jared?
Um, so just a question about our FOIA officer. There was not a whole lot of information provided about him other than he's been working essentially freelance for the city. FOIA is a pretty important position to have. Is there a reason why we're not being provided much background on the gentleman being offered for appointment?
Uh, VITAs were included in the packet.
I did not. I only saw the one for Tim.
Should have. You don't have the one for Ross McNeil?
Oh, there it is. Yeah.
Yeah. It's in your packet. Jared, if you're trying to talk, you're muted.
I see. Okay, I, I guess I made a mistake. I, I was reading all of that as extended pages of Tim's. Tim's, not as, I didn't see Ross's name at the top of that.
And Tim has extensive engineering experience. Ross has legal experience.
I guess that makes sense now. Well, um, he's not here tonight, is he?
No.
Okay. Just while we're on the, on the topic of it, I'm not convinced that we've seen enough information other than, you know, a simple CB is being enough to approve this appointment for something that's so important. And I also want to let folks know, I was, could have mentioned it during council comment, but I'll mention it now since we're on appointments. But I intend to try and figure out a way to bring forward some legislation to revive our appointment process because most of our coding is from the 1970s and has not been rethought or brought into the modern era since then. So I think it would be good for us to reconsider how we do appointments at the city and perhaps bring about a more comprehensive process than the one that exists currently today where it's pretty much formalities for most points. This one is mandated by state law, so we do have a say in this one, which is one of the reasons why I think it's important that council members consider this appointment, not just a book, Tim, we've met, we've heard from numerous times. He's spoken to us. He's given us interest. Every other officer position that we have a say in, we do this for. This is, would be a state-mandated appointment that we are not doing this for. We have not met this gentleman. We have not heard his views. We do not know what his intentions are for handling FOIA processing. And I would like to hear some of those things before I would approve it. I, I may be alone in that feeling, but if anybody else would be entertaining it, I'm not going to make that motion to separate the question of this appointment from the original motion. But if someone else sees the point that I'm making and would like to support it, I would happily second someone else's motion to do so.
I can assure you that Ross McNeil is following the Freedom of Information Act law. And he has been for several weeks as we have been for the past year. So he intends, and he is complying with the FOIA law. And I would appreciate the appointment going forward. Diane?
Yes. I just wanted to clarify something that you said about the city clerk and the role in FOIA. Is it fair to say that the city clerk is almost like the server, the waitress, the waiter, and then the lawyers are the cooks? Meaning they gather the information, then they take it to the departments and the lawyers to figure out, and then whatever they give them, then they distribute? Or is that not a fair comparison?
The, well, Phyllis, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All of the FOIA requests that come through the city come to our office first.